We're here tonight, this is the planning board meeting of May twentieth. We have a quorum and is there a motion to open the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think we're expecting one other to join us. When she does, I think it's Jennifer, so she'll be working as a full member this evening when she shows up. Okay, our first item tonight is Eleven Kittle Road LLC, AKA Kittle House, Eleven Kittle Road. This is an application for a site development plan, removal tree removal permit, and lease service permit for renovations.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and to the board staff for the record, Brett Schwartz from Zaren Steinmetz representing the applicant. Christie Crace, one of the new owners, is with us tonight, her husband Scott, son Jackson on Zoom. They're the ones just conversing with Bob before the meeting. And our whole consulting team is here as well. So as you remember from last time, this whole application is about making improvements to Kittle House to modernize it and make it safer for generations to come. We submitted the package on April fourteenth that we believe responded to all of the prior comments. Ken and Rob will take your board through those. We've reviewed the comments that were issued in advance of tonight's meeting. We're confident that we'll be able to respond to all of those comments that were just received. So we're hopeful that by the end of tonight, your board will be ready to advance this to a public hearing and hopefully approvals. We're certainly wanting to begin this work as soon as possible and we can get into some of that construction timeframes with you all during our presentation. So I'll turn it to Ken to walk you through our supplemental.
Okay?
Great. Good evening, Ken Anderson, Grand Ole Architects, how are you?
Um.
I think Jeff Share needs to be promoted to presenter. I don't know who does that.
Oh, CJ? Or Freedom, can you put, I'm sorry, what is your name?
Jeff Share.
Jeff Share, can he?
Gotcha, he raises his hand.
Be able to share, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I share?
You can.
Do you like to speak then? You can hear it. Just share screen.
Share screen. I assume we'll see it come up.
Yeah.
I didn't know if he should come up here with it.
Probably here for the money.
Yeah. I mean, I'll be talking, he's just.
I just don't have the option to share screen.
Still no option? Sorry.
Freedom?
Yeah.
Can he share his screen?
I'm trying to communicate with him right now.
Okay.
Hi.
Sorry.
Talk about the Knicks.
Yeah.
Just gonna say, listen to my phones delays on construction.
Yeah. I mean, just to summarize from memory, everything, but we were able to address all the board comments before. There were a few that were big ones. And I think one of them was the tree removal in the one corner of the property because we were trying to make more parking. So what we did is we were able to save three trees that were documented and actually one other tree that wasn't documented. So four trees in total, which were significant, by just eliminating a few spots and making our retaining wall in that corner where the trees were going to be eliminated in a different location. I will show you that graphically.
Right, and if you could show us the three trees.
Yeah, sure.
The precise ones that were saved.
There were other trees that, towards the downward part of the property, towards where the garbage cans are and the access, fire access road are, that we were also asked to see if we can save. It was very difficult to save those. We needed to, we needed to move the fire access road. If you can just highlight the dotted line, which is the existing way. We needed to move it to make it more fire access friendly. And it created grading such that we had to remove, you can see the Xs of the trees being removed.
Is that what the American Sycamore was that was identified in the memo?
Yes, 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 that was a good memory, correct. Again, we tried multiple different options with grading and a wall and it just didn't work. But if you go to the upper left in that red revision, what were the three trees, Jeff?
Uh.
They were of significant caliper, just.
Fifty inch, a thirty-six inch, and another thirty.
A fifty inch, a thirty-six inch, and there was.
It was a twelve, I don't know.
Yeah, there was a three.
The fifty inch, I think, was the one that we all were.
Correct, so in total, we were about saving about a hundred inches of caliper tree. So we did slightly reduce our tree replacement plan.
So what's going on up here in this area? Right now, as I understand it, as I recall, you have a wall there and there's parallel parking. So I think you're cutting into the hill, right, to expand?
We're cutting into the hill, if you.
To the red line?
Uh, no, see on the top, left to right, see where his, that area there is all new parking, which is front loaded. There's currently no parking there.
Right.
So if you recall, as part of the improvements of the, of this arrival sequence, we are eliminating the parking along the driveway access. So now that's going to be planted nicely with trees and parking court is getting a little smaller, which is, it's very overlarge as it is now. We're adding trees around the parking court and paving. And to make up for that, we're adding those spaces left to right where the retaining wall is.
But above where you're putting this in, it seemed to me, I don't, I know you have a grading plan as well, but it seems to me that you were grading that area or regrading it?
I think, in conjunction.
And I think that's what's causing the loss of any trees up here.
Well, it was, yes, it was a combination of grading and the retaining wall, which there still is grading and a retaining wall, but because we didn't cut in so much and we eliminated some spots, now it's able to be saved.
Do you have the opportunity just to show what you had last time? Do you have that here?
Yes.
Just so we can see, so I think you can see the change.
Correct. I think, if you back out of that folder, there's the, I have, it says previous presentation. If you open it.
No, those trees are being removed. So I think there's still others. So, yeah. Let's take a look, see.
So, see that area there? You can see how the trees, the parking cut in closer to that corner, if you will.
So are these trees here to be saved?
Those are new trees, I think.
New trees, okay.
You see the Xs? Those, that tree, that tree, and that tree, those are the ones we're saving now.
Okay. And those are the three that were marked in the.
Yes, and then there was one undocumented, I can't remember where.
Yeah, I think it was in a different area.
Oh, was it, oh, I see, it was in a different area.
Yeah, it was marked incorrectly, two inches, it should have been twelve.
Yeah, so, these were the bulk of the caliper that we were saving, the fifty-three, the thirty-five, and twelve.
And so the way we are saving those is you're going to use a wall instead of grading it up?
We are still going to use a wall, but we got rid of some spots, we.
Oh, I see.
So.
Yeah, they got rid of, it looks like, you know, you can see it better here, if there was an overlay, those things would come together.
Yeah.
Close more top.
Yes. So, that was a significant sort of preservation of the trees that exist and to keep the existing character of that wooded area between Kittle Road and existing parking. And we feel moving the parking that's along the driveway access is a nice thing as well for neighbors because of the less disturbance of them. I should also add, in advance of us hoping to get to a public hearing, we did invite, how many of the neighbors in the?
Seventy?
We invited, well, you invited about a hundred of the HOA of the neighborhood.
Well, that's who showed up, we invited everybody.
And seventy showed up and we did a similar presentation to them, what we're doing. It was all received very well, very positive, they were thankful, they were, you know, they were, they were very happy that the Kittle House is going to remain relatively intact the way it is, so they were very supportive of it. And we did show them about the number of replacement trees we were doing and how we're removing some of the parking from the driveway access and adding safer parking, you know, around the building. So in doing that, now our parking is, the original approval from nineteen ninety-seven was a hundred and sixty-four, but of that hundred and sixty-four, there was, I want to say land, I don't want to say land bank, but there was like dashed in parking of twelve spaces that said, build out if you need it. So in reality, they had a hundred and fifty-two spots. We're at currently a hundred and forty-nine, which is a hundred and eighteen are paved and ninety-three are sort of the grass overflow, which is the lower, lower level.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you a question about that.
Sure.
When I was looking at the drawing, some is asphalt, some is crushed stone, and some is grass. I understand the grass.
Yes.
I understand the asphalt. Is the crushed stone there because you need pervias? Or is a crushed stone there just because it's a different material? What's the reasoning for that not being grass, for that not being asphalt?
It was always historically crushed stone in that area, I don't know if you can highlight the lowest area there.
Yeah, right down there.
Yeah, right down there. And that was always an overflow parking area for.
And it's always been crushed stone?
And it's always been crushed stone. I think it's been pulverized to the point now where it's like more gray dirt, but yeah, we intend to improve it with crushed.
And you're not considering asphalt there?
No, we don't want to, it's a little close to the septic system and we don't want to sort of impinge upon that as it exists.
Is there any chance that could go to the grass to the right? Or that would, it would have too much wear and tear?
What can go?
The crushed stone gravel area.
No, we can't, we can't.
With the grass parking on the right, if that's all, is that overflow too, or does that really get used?
That gets used rarely, but on a large event, it may get used, and that's grass.
More valet.
It's more valet.
I mean, is there any benefit to the whole site if that was grass instead of crushed stone?
The whole lower level?
The whole, yeah, just the bottom part, that area down below. You know, just curiosity, you know, for maintenance, for pervies.
I'll defer to James here. Sorry, Jeff?
Yeah, no worries.
I know it's on a landscape.
Jeff Share is our landscape architect. Hey, how's it going? Jeff Share, landscape architect. That area is a little bit shady, or more shady, because it's in the woods area or wooded area set in more, so it doesn't get as much sun as the, with the area that we're proposing the lawn.
Okay.
So it may just get muddy and difficult to wear and tear, so gravel is easier.
Get muddy. Fair enough. But the grass area, is that not the primary area for the valet parking? Because those are the narrow parking spots that are the, what's it, the nine by eighteen or something?
Yeah.
As opposed to the others that are nine by twenty and.
Yeah.
So it seems to me that, and actually, we've been there, that's where the valet parking goes, so that the other parking is available to the rest of us, so we can knock into each other's cars. And, but the valet was always down below. So it seems to me that, in fact, the statement is that that will be used a lot. Because whenever you valet, you're going to have on weekends, right?
Yeah.
Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, and events?
Yeah, no, but we have a big party, like we have a wedding à la carte, then if we're using, we have à la carte only, only if we have a wedding.
I think the down below is more for use of restaurant workers and staff.
This area down here?
The gravel.
The gravel area.
And only, only honestly, a handful of restaurant employees, because most of the employees, there's a bus drop off right on.
Okay. One seventeen.
One seventeen, right across from Kittle Road. Most people come that way or they Uber to work. A lot of the workers don't have cars, so.
I don't know if you can speak to that job about how many employee cars.
Talking about almost like fifteen?
Yeah.
Yep, can you identify yourself for a future, I'm sorry?
Sure. I'm John Gundy, I'm the general manager of Kittle House.
Okay, great.
So basically, we have almost thirty-five people employees, but most of them didn't have a car, they use a car service. So we talk about fifteen parking spot, they always park in the third level, which one you talk about?
Right, okay.
And also during the day, when the day-to-day office employees are there, a lot of times, they're not there during the event, so there's an overlap where it's not needed as much. And honestly, the Kittle House has existed for a very long time with ninety-three spots that have been improved and it's worked fine without problem. And I think, I think that was it for the major changes that we did. Maybe Rob from JMC can speak about the engineering comments and what they changed.
I think, especially before council, let us leave. I think we should, I know there was one working issue out there regarding the tree application.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the randomness of that, whether it's possible. So perhaps, John, you can speak to it and see where we are on that.
Can I address something first too?
Sure.
So I did, I did speak to Dennis on this, because even though it's another tree application, I think when we first applied for the tree removal is when they first purchased the property. A lot of things were in disrepair, nothing was ever managed in the wooded areas or perimeters of the property. Things were dangerous, trees were leaning over, there's dead trees everywhere, so their immediate concern was for safety. So we applied for a permit only because, you know, that's what the protocol is. Dennis went out, many of the trees or all of the trees didn't require a replacement because they were either dead, dying, or diseased. So we did notice the neighbors for that. And then we would love to do all this other tree removal in July and August. The Crises are, have planned to close during July and August a hundred percent, which is a big decision because, you know, they have a staff, they have events, they have revenue, money-making opportunities that they're losing out on. And it's not like they can just push that or move that, it's something that's already made a decision on. And so we would love to cut those trees during that timeframe. I know there is this year calendar event, so I think that the spirit of that calendar year rule was to avoid people, you know, applying twenty times for a single tree to not have to notice the neighbors, where we have noticed the neighbors already on all the aspects of what we were doing. So if we could consider it like a, I don't know, phase one and a phase two of what we've done, we've noticed them initially, we've obviously noticed them again for this other permit, so that was our hope. I don't know if we can get support from you, but we would love to have your support on that.
I think there's some fair points in that, in terms of the notice and in terms of the nature of the original work that was done. And, you know, I mean, you don't want to punish somebody for clearing up dangerous trees. You know, I think that, I think that's a fair application under the code because, you know, whether the dangerous trees are before or after the permit's issued, that work should be done immediately.
Yeah, no, thank you, I agree.
And I think, I think the board would support, I hope the board would support, this is sort of like a continuing application and that we've got field changes that we've made in the field and changes that we see once we clear some of this stuff out. So it's really a continuum of the same sort of work. So I don't think it really will be a hurdle that we can just consider this to be an ongoing application from last October, just ongoing and continuing, and then we can just consider it to be, worst case scenario, field change that Dennis has observed with the applicant, said we can make these changes and move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Question, if this applicant had come in six months beyond that one year, this would be a no issue?
Correct, and but.
No, they just want to check.
Yeah, the fear is that, you know, then he comes back in three months, he says, you know, I have just one tree in the back corner and, you know, let me just, it goes into Dennis of the town. And you don't want, you don't want to have this board consider the application as a whole and then have people nibbling at the edges.
And again, we have built in the code, we have certain provisions in there that you can do certain things every year. You can take down certain trees without having to get an application within a twelve-month period. So it's the same sort of thing, it's really, I think it's in there to prevent people from playing games.
Right.
And I don't think that's the case here. And I would, I would support working with the applicant and calling in a field change or whatever we want to do, just to continue the application and not a problem. So does that sound okay?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, good evening, Mr. Chairman, number of the board. My name is Rob Aiello, I'm a principal and engineer with JMC. So our last submission to your board included additional technical data. It included our stormwater pollution prevention plan, it included the grading and utilities plans, and it also included a narrative and an overview of the existing septic system that currently serves the property and will continue to serve the property going forward. So with regard to stormwater management, just to do a brief overview, as we do have an increase in pervious area, we are proposing two separate stormwater management systems, one on the left side of the building and one on the right. They're underground systems and they're the grayish solar panel looking, you know, boxes that are on the plan, but they are under the ground. And the one on the left is intended for stormwater infiltration. And the one on the right is actually provided for detention. So, you know, with SWIP, we went through all the calculations and we also received the town engineers memorandum yesterday. Since we received it, there were a number of comments within it, but we've gone through each and every one of them, we're able to address them. We've done, redone the calculations, which we will resubmit to the board. And the upshot of it is that the system on the left increases by about fifty percent and it's still within the existing parking area. Basically, we had a deeper system and we made it more shallow and spread it out based on some of the newer stormwater requirements that were just enacted in the new general permit and stormwater value. With regard to, so we, we'll revise our SWIP and provide that information, but that's really, in essence, the only physical change to the site plan. With regard to the septic system, you know, there are three grease traps located in the upper right-hand corner of the building. There are two septic tanks as you come down along the bottom right-hand of the building. And then the fields are in the, you know, the meadow area, south of the parking area that we were just discussing. So all of the components remain as they currently are. As you may recall, there's actually a reduction in the seats as a, you know, as a consequence of the proposed improvements. You know, as we have been further coordinating with some of the interior building renovations, the three grease traps, which total twenty-five hundred gallons, will be replaced by two new ones totaling five thousand gallons for additional treatment. And really, that was necessitated by some inverts, you know, basically the elevations we needed to hit coming out of the building based on work happening inside the building. So that's an overview of the technical aspects that's been provided, in addition, we added a control plan. And we also are showing the new water services coming in on the top of the page to serve the building. There's a fire service and a domestic service and a heated enclosure above grade, which will be off of Kittle Road. That's that box that's right there.
Are the grease traps set up so that they prevent the grease from going into the septic area? Is that the whole, what their function is?
Correct, correct. And you have a restaurant septic system, you want all the kitchen waste to go into the grease traps and then all the non-kitchen waste go directly to the septic tanks, but it's providing initial treatment to keep the grease from going into the fields.
Right.
And it gets pumped out.
Right, so it gets pumped out.
Quite frequently, yes.
It's, yeah.
Yes.
It does.
Yes. Okay. There was something in the narrative about a broken pipe leading to one of the fields.
Correct.
So it seems to me that that might have been something that resulted from use of the parking area that's just above. Wouldn't you think that that could have been the reason?
It's possible, yeah, the system is constantly reviewed and maintained and these are, these are, you know, things that just happen as a matter of course in the wear and tear of the system. And it's great that the Crises have been on top of it as much as they have been. They've really made a lot of improvements to the nuts and bolts of the system since they've taken over the property.
Would the applicant be willing to share those reports when you guys do your work? So the town gets these reports, you know, Jeff would get it, Jeff's department would get it. And we've done this before on other septic areas, problematic or where, not really problematic, but delicate.
Sure, sure.
In a delicate area.
Sensitive.
It's every restaurant in Rochester County that's on a septic system, yeah.
Sensitive. Sensitive. I mean, you're doing those reports anyway, it seems to, you know, internally, but if you could share those just so that we have documents inside, making sure that these things are being done.
Sure, that can be done. And actually, there were a couple in our narrative and some of the appendices. What happens is you go through a repair permit process with the county, but we can certainly provide a copy to the town.
So my recollection was that you do that every six months or so?
Well, there's, there's ongoing pumping of the tanks that happened on a more regular basis.
Right.
Then there is periodic inspection of the system just to make sure that things are operating properly. The pipe repairs that you were mentioning are more under the periodic checkups.
Right.
But the more routine pumping of the grease traps and the septic tanks happen on a more routine basis.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rob?
Yeah.
To that point, Jackson might be able to, when you took over, I think, one or two of the tanks wasn't seen or used.
Okay. Okay. What was, what we were just discussing was, you know, Jackson Crace has been very involved in the, you know, understanding how the septic system works and making sure that it's properly maintained. And, you know, Jackson is on the Zoom call, but there were some tanks that actually weren't working properly. So that was also rectified.
Was that the first set that you've now taken offline?
Yeah, I'm not, you know, to be honest, I'm not sure which set of tanks it was, I just.
Jackson?
Yeah. Jackson is on the line if you'd like to speak with him, but I'm not sure. You know if it's the grease traps or the septic tanks?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't think it was the grease traps.
No, it was definitely the septic.
It was the, it was.
Oh, it was the septic.
It was one, it was three septic areas and one's offline.
Yeah.
Oh, well, no, we're, so there's. Oh, you're talking about the fields?
Ah.
No, it was, it was, the tanks, the cover was off the tank, they couldn't get to the cover on the tank.
Okay, right. So the ones that you were just talking about, the two that are off, online and one that's offline, those are the fields.
Right.
What we're referring to are the septic tanks, which had an issue with the access cover, which you need to have operating properly in order to properly maintain the system.
Right.
So there's been a lot of attention and care provided by the Gris family.
Is the one system that's offline, is it available in the future for emergencies or when something else happens? Or are they, is it, has the county closed it down or are you guys just closing it down for yourselves?
No, actually, that was done in twenty-ten. It was another engineer who actually was dealing with an issue that was happening at the time. So what they did was they took that portion of the systematic commission to allow time for it to recover.
Right.
But since it has been out of service for so long, it would be available if needed in the future.
Okay.
Yeah, when you build a septic system, you have your expansion area, so this is like having an expansion area that you can rotate.
Right. Yeah, right. Yeah, it's like a built-in expansion area that you're going to get.
Val. Yeah.
Um, well, okay, anything else?
That was it?
Okay, I just, on the fields at the bottom of the page, are those existing fields in the wetland buffer?
They're existing fields, actually, they're existing galleys, they're the concrete.
They're the galleys, okay.
Four by four galleys, yes, and those septic.
And they'll be operational?
They, they are currently operational, yes.
They are, okay.
Yeah, they're serving the property right now. The only change we're making, they're upgrading the grease traps.
Got you.
The, I think there was something in the, hate to emphasize all the septic stuff here, but there was one mention in there, I forget which system. When you had a problem that clay was put in to protect the wetlands in the buffer downstream, so that there was a clay barrier that was installed. Was that on the number one system that's now offline or was it on two or three?
It's on, it's on the two and three and what was done is you put clay on the downhill side so sewage doesn't seep out through the slope, it actually has more opportunity to go into the ground.
So it's on the two and three that are operating?
Correct.
Okay, great. Can we mark that on the site plan so that we have that? Because I know it's just written here in the narrative.
In narrative, right. Sure.
But we don't know whether that's there for number one.
Probably not.
It was taken off and you put two and three into the.
It's right, because number one is further up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any else?
That completes our presentation.
Okay. Okay, good, we'll go to standard. Okay, good. We'll go to, uh, staff comments. Sabrina, you had some comments and questions?
Good evening, board. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I only have a couple of comments and I think we did a lot of talking today with the applicant and among staff. Um, my memo on page two just clarifies that this is a type-two action. Um, my second comment is in regards to the building coverage. This is a pre-existing non-conforming use in a residential, in a residential district. The building itself is within the maximum building coverage limits, um, which is good news 'cause, you know, it, it doesn't seem out of character to any of the houses in the neighborhood. The development coverage, um, while there is, uh, development coverage associated with, you know, this zone is associated with residential uses, it really doesn't cover coverage for use such as this. Um, so the applicant did provide a coverage calculation for development coverage, which is, you know, uh, uh, greater than what we would expect in a residential neighborhood. It's a difference of seven thousand five hundred eighty-nine square feet. Um, I don't think their total development coverage, I think it's important, the, the special permit, um, and this approval will reflect what that development coverage is so that in, you know, several years from now, if they come back, we can keep track of the development coverage and make sure that, you know, it, it's consistent with what we're approving today. I did talk about in my memo that I'm going to the zoning board of appeals, but after much discussion with the building inspector, inspector and internally, because it is a pre-existing non-conforming use in a residential district, we don't think that they need to go to the zoning board and apply that residential coverage standard. Um, but we do wanna keep track of it moving forward. My, I, I think my largest comment really relates to the parking calculations. And, you know, I understand, um, you know, that they've been functioning, you know, with limited parking and it's been working and they have the valet and I think that that's great, but we need to be able to prove it out. Um, and right now, there's some inconsistencies between the schematics on the plan, I think it's L one oh one, and the tables and the charts. So I just wanna be able to, you know, add one plus one equals two and make sure that the parking is confirmed and that the analysis for the parking is confirmed. Um, the rate, remaining of my, of my comments, comments five, six and seven, um, really, and they really relate to, um, adding notes to that site plan. So, um, you know, thank you for addressing the notes, uh, in your narrative and in communications that I received back and to review, they're all there, but we really need to put them on the site plan so that they exist in perpetuity once this rule is put in place. And then, um, the, my, it, my comment nine is really responses to, uh, the board's comments from last meeting and the applicant has addressed all of that. Okay, and, and then I did say that I would have no objection to the planning board sending this to public hearing if, uh, you so choose.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
So Sabrina, on, on item three, I just, for, for my own clarification, so the existing coverage right now is about fifty-six thousand feet?
Yep.
And you're saying it's a difference of about seventy-six hundred, what's the difference?
Um.
What's the other number that we're, we're making the difference of or from?
The, the maximum allowable.
Okay, so the maximum allowable is about forty-seven and change?
Correct.
Gotcha, thanks.
Okay. Um, one thing that's, um, mentioned and, um, uh, Sabrina's, uh, talked about maybe in point number seven.
Oh, lighting.
We don't, yeah, lighting, uh, you know, we asked for a lighting plan and we still don't have a lighting plan. So, uh.
There was a, the first submission, there was a lighting.
Uh, I don't think so, 'cause I, well, maybe, it could be. I know we asked for it, but, um.
Maybe not photometrics.
That's.
I think lighting, there was a statement on lighting. The lighting was identified and it was said to be replacement in kind, but we still need some photographs.
Yeah, I mean, I wanna make sure that, uh, obviously there's no spillage.
Yeah, that one.
Uh, as much as possible eliminated.
Yeah.
And then this board is always concerned about lumens and Kelvin.
Yes, yeah.
And, uh, you know, what we wanna use. And, uh, so that's important. And of course, all the downward lighting, uh, all these things that we all talk about. But we, I don't think we have a plan that shows us where the lights are, how they're going to be displayed. Uh, and of course, hours of lighting, I think Sabrina mentions that in point number seven, hours of lighting, et cetera. But we don't have a lighting plan and that's, that's critically important.
I apologize, is this, what is the lighting plan? But it, it's. We're mostly replacing all the overhead lighting with, with path lights and, uh, sconces on the building. What we don't have, and you're correct, are the photometrics supporting that, but it's all much less than what's existing there now.
Okay.
So we will, it will be no problem to, to get.
Yeah, and, and I think, uh, you know, the stuff on, on the side of the, the building is, is probably not an issue. What it really comes down to is making sure that we have, um, good safe lighting.
Yes.
But adequate and not spillage, uh, for the parking area.
Yes.
Of course.
Let me just point out headlights also for parking, just, I know you guys have fences up. If you can just show us, you know, what kind of fences you have, just again, we wanna make sure headlights are not pointing to, into neighbors' houses, things like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I think honestly, the majority of the parking is, is parked into either a graded hill or a fence.
Yeah. On the, on the south side it is, on the north side, you're up high, so you're gonna be.
Uh, yes, yes, there's, there's trees over there.
And there's trees over there. I know there's, you have a fence there, but, you know, if we could have some detail on the fence just to make sure.
Sure.
Do you do slats or however, whatever kind of fence, just make sure.
Okay, yeah, we could, we could speak of that.
I thought I saw something in there with like different colors for the fence treatment, which all seem to be shades of gray, which was fine.
Yeah, yeah.
But that, yeah, very good, that's, that's a very good point.
Okay, yeah.
Again, 'cause this is, uh, you know, a residential area, we wanna make sure that we have as little impact as possible.
Of course.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
Solid fence.
Solid fence, yeah.
So those will be on the north side?
Those will be along, is that north?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Yeah, escape guards just never know.
Yes. North side.
And did that detail say wooded or PVC?
Wood.
Wood, okay, thanks.
Okay. Great.
Sorry to interject.
Okay, no problem. Dennis, you had some thoughts, comments?
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Comment one, done. Comment two, um, I just had a question, uh, 'cause I was looking at sheet L two hundred, which is your tree removal plan. So I just need clarifications, I may have shortchanged you in terms of credit for remaining trees, 'cause you guys show one of those three big trees is number two nine five nine, which is one of the thirty-four inch silver maples. On that plan, it has an X through it. But then I noticed when you were sharing some of the others, it seems to still have a silhouette remain. So in moment, if I can get a yea or a nay, it basically would then either negate some of the follow-up that I had with respect to some of the numerics with the replacement and the canopy, because obviously, if you're not removing that thirty-four inch tree, then you would, you would need to technically replace less trees. So that's, that's the only one that confused me, 'cause I think it has an X through it on the removal plan. But you guys were made, I thought, reference to the potentially saving it.
Sorry, I was trying to show you, but.
Okay, no, it's fine.
What, what number, Dennis?
Uh, number two nine five nine is a thirty-four inch silver maple. So one of the, they were the three big ones that were over in that, in that corner where you're.
I think that's one we were gonna save, but.
Uh, two nine five nine.
Saved.
Oh, it's removed?
Yeah, I think two.
Well, it depends on which sheet you're looking at, so this is now your time.
Two nine fifty-two.
If you're gonna remove it, that's fine. If you're gonna keep it, that's fine, but.
I think two nine fifty-two is the one they saved.
Yep, that one I have is remain. I also have two nine four nine, which is fifty inches to remain.
Yep.
Uh, it just seems like, I, I just picked it up now. Some of the other plans seem to keep two nine five nine, but the tree removal plan shows an X through it, so I just wanted to.
That one, that one's gonna be removed.
The tree removal is grading.
Right, that's what I thought, okay. So then everything else seems to be, uh, relevant then as I, as I, as I go through. So that basically represented the area where it was gonna be, you know, dendrological savings. Everything else is pretty much consistent with the, with the prior submission. So when I get into the tree replacement and landscaping plan, I just wanted to point out, uh, sort of our method of calculation that, you know, rising up in terms of caliber that you're gonna, you know, purchase as a replacement doesn't necessarily equate to the caliber replacement required. We always, we always go by number of trees. So for us, that two-point-five inch is just a consistent factor, which we divide into what the replacement inches are. So that's why your calculations were going more off caliber, 'cause you were going with larger diameter or larger caliber trees. But for us, it goes by a number of, number of trees, so that's why I just pointed, uh, that out. But again, um, I took the liberty of just inserting a couple of, uh, other numbers with respect to the shrubs and the provision in one twenty-one dash six I with the equivalence based on eight shrubs to a tree. Uh, so it, you know, still appears that you guys are, are, are meeting the, uh, the number totals. The only tweak that I pointed out was it just seems like you fell just a couple of trees short of trying to get to fifty percent of, of, of the canopy trees. I think it was three trees, uh, short. And again, just reading the code, that didn't have, uh, like a caveat of, of, of latitude in terms of, you know, uh, where, like, for example, uh, when it comes to like invasive species, the approving authority has, you know, uh, basically, um, uh, discretion to say, well, you know, you're, you don't need to replace that tree because it's a non-native invasive species. And that is in the code. This didn't have any writing, so this would be, if you could just, uh, do a little tweak and, you know, come up with three more canopy trees or come up with three less understory trees, I guess it would, the numbers would all work out in accordance with one twenty-one six. Um, and my only other comment under that was just, I know I mentioned this last time, just, whatever, I know you're gonna use something with respect to herbivory protection, but just include that on the plan. Because it certainly is a lot of plantings. I know the owners like plantings, we've talked about it. Not, not, not all life forms are gonna be respecting that, you know, so you're gonna wanna keep those out when you're, when you're planting. Switching to wetlands, I was fine with the remediation. Uh, if you recall, they just had to do some, uh, additional carrying out of, 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 of the wetland areas and they encompassed all of the within the limits of the property. They did that and that's fine. And then I guess Ken shared a drawing with me earlier in the day that he could speak to with respect to the water course determination and now where that appears on the plan and what that, what that buffer is. But we, we seem to be consistent on that demarcation as well. So it appears at least from the plan that they have submitted now, uh, that none of the finished, uh, items are gonna end up in the wetlands buffer. So it seems like they could avoid a, uh, time to cast a wetland's permit. And that basically summarizes my comments.
Okay, great, thank you. Jeff, you had some comments?
Yes, boy, thank you. Um, so, yeah, I had a, we had a, not one comments. Most of them were minor, minor comments that it's made to changes to the plan. So were a couple of intermediates, sort of impactful comments that we had, um, off the school. But one of them is, uh, sort of delineating the impervious coverage over the new, uh, tributary areas of the, where the stormwater is falling. Um, uh, biggest one that was really, um, they had a, there was an increase. They showed an increase in post-construction runoff on one of their, um, design points, so that's gotta get, kinda worked out. That may affect system design a little bit. Um, other than that, again, most of it was, you know, sort of, uh, an exercise really, just to get the, get everything buttoned up. So nothing, nothing I think that is not, is insurmountable.
Uh, with the exception of those that you've mentioned, uh, these are also something that you could condition in a resolution?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Comments of board members, questions?
I still am, I.
Um, I think, uh, just so we can do it, uh, publicly, we talked about the turning radii, uh, trucks, et cetera. My question was whether, uh, the radii were appropriate and were with full parking. And I think you indicated, Jeff, that was okay.
Yeah, the, yeah, the, the turning radiuses were fine. Um, we did also have the question on, uh, frequency of pickups as well.
Refuse.
Yeah, refuse pickups. Um, that may be something we, the board would ask for. Uh, an analysis of the waste, uh, generation and, you know, storage and how frequently it gets picked up.
Right, right. Uh, again, because it's a residential area, uh, this is really critical. Now, apparently, uh, we were advised that back in, under former ownership, there was a, a complaint filed in twenty-one uh, with regard to refuse and not being picked up, et cetera. So it, it's a sensitive issue, especially in the summertime. So, um, whether or not you can work with your, um, uh, refuse collector and maybe twice a week? Or maybe the answer is, you know, more containers, uh, you know, uh, whatever that is. I mean, there's a scientific solution to this. Um, and, um, so it can be resolved, but it's something that probably should be looked at and, and, um, and discussed. It will be something that we would probably condition and, um.
Well, it's okay, we'll, we'll go back and consult the proposal program.
Right, exactly, yeah. And it's into the engineer's point, uh, there are apparently, uh, equations out there. Number of people who eat and how much garbage you need and how much garbage you give off and whatever. Never do this.
There's something here?
I, oh yeah, this is great, this is wonderful, things we learn here. It's endless, yes, um, okay.
We'll get back to you on that.
Yep.
Here.
Yeah. Anyone else do anything at all? Okay. Um, will the grass area be the only area that you use for valet parking? 'Cause those were the ones that were designated for the, the more narrow spots. So I guess those would just be designated for, okay, good, okay. All right, um, so we need, um, I guess a few things from you folks.
Or refuse plan?
Yep.
Refuge, refuse plan?
Well, yeah, yeah, okay. If you wanna dignify it with a point.
Maybe not a plan, strategy.
Exactly.
A program. Clarification on Dennis, one twenty-one six?
Yep.
And the, and the, the parking and the headlights.
Yes, and, and treatments on, uh, low lighting, treatments, yeah. So, um, the board's preference with these things that we have to do, we have, uh, not a whole lot of time, not a whole lot of meetings between now and, and our break in August. Although, I will say that, um, we have in the past, um, for worthy applicants, scheduled special meetings, uh, either on our time off and to get things done. Uh, those tend not to be public hearings, but we have done, uh, you know, resolution meetings, et cetera. So if it gets to that point, uh, we might be able to, uh, you know, find that, you know, we're, we're around, the staff is around, we might be able to do that. So the, the issue is we have some stuff to come in, um, what's.
Sounds like we could get all that in, Ken, in a week, a week or so?
Yeah, yeah.
Certainly before the June third meeting.
Well, the, okay, technically, the June third information is already passed, right?
Deadline is passed for that.
But it's not a, it's not, I mean, it's up to the staff really, because you guys have to review this and put it all together. So does it matter if we go, unfortunately, we're not meeting those.
Those.
Tag Soshiori in the middle of June. Um, so our first meeting in July is when?
July first.
July first?
And the, uh, submission deadline is June ninth.
So I thi, I think, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I think it does matter, um, for the construction to begin in early July. So our ask would be to have that public hearing June third. We must still get the information to the board so that you see that you have it and you can have a resolution ready that night.
July third, on June third?
On June third.
No, it's not gonna, that will not happen.
It's June first, isn't it?
No, no, July first.
July first.
July first is the next one. Felicia said, but you're asking for June third?
I thought June is the, is the next meeting.
June third is, to be exact.
June third is the next meeting.
June thirty, so.
Yeah, so, so that would be at a minimum, public hearing is what, is what we would like to listen.
Right.
Get the public hearing open and hopefully close that night. We expect to have overwhelming favorable support from the public that night. Um, I think some of the items that we're talking about aren't necessarily things that the public would be commenting on. Um, so I think we could submit that in a week or so, right, before June third.
They could comment on trash and lighting.
They could.
And we, and not only could they comment, but we haven't had a chance to see it, so there's no way we can put together a resolution. I mean, you know.
So this limits then, in, in the spirit of then scheduling a special meeting, could we have a special meeting on the resolution and for later?
We might, we might, if we, if we're, if we can get together a, you know, a quorum.
That would be great.
So we've done that in the past, so sometime, um, maybe even, you know, late June, if we. maybe even, you know, late June, if we do this in June third. I mean, it's up to staff, you guys have to give me feedback in terms of whether or not, you know, if you get stuff in a week, you're down to, uh, a weekend or so just to review the, the materials. And it gets to be very, very tight. So, uh, the issue is, um, you have to tell us, uh, we'll try to work with you as much as we can here. But if we do it July one and have a resolution ready for you in a week or two, even from there, it, it works. What's the, we have two meetings in July, right?
We do, July first and the fifteenth.
Right.
That's then going, I think, I think too far for the, for, for the crisis. I think we would like to have the public hearing June third. And if everything is in order, depending upon the comments that night, come back middle to late June for a special meeting just on the resolution.
To start construction like July one?
Like July, July one, e- even, even maybe sooner.
Even before that?
Yeah. As Ken mentioned, it's all about shutting down the facility.
Yeah, you're shut down for two months in the heart of the summer, that's a big deal.
Yeah, and there's employees who.
Right, and, and heavy, heavy, where do you stand with your building permits?
Ken?
Building permits have been phased, um, uh, right now, we're about to submit the phase three, which is includes the work of the addition. I have had numerous discussions with, uh, Tom DePaul. So he's aware of exactly what's happening and all the phasing, uh, he's working with us, um, uh, we, we, um, I, particularly how it happens, I sit down with Tom i- i- in, in your conference room, and we go through the entire plan, plan review with him, and I show him all the code implications and everything. And then, you know, usually takes him a little bit of time after that, and he issues a permit. So we're very much on track for a, a, a building permit subject, we'll get a building permit subject to a, a planning board resolution.
Right, and so on that, if you guys wanna get started, so I'm gonna require a pre-cut inspection. So if you can mark the trees that are going to be removed, not, not just the discs I know that are on there. Um, I'm gonna need the weapons buffer certainly located and, you know, what lay the stake in. Um, so that we don't encroach beyond that.
Right.
Uh, and if you wanna set up your perimeter fencing in those areas, cause obviously if you look at the plans, things are a little close, not super close, but close. So that, you know, it's doubly indicated, uh, that would be fine too. And I, I can complete those inspections regardless of, you know, what transpires. If there's no changes in tree removal and.
Okay.
There's no other weapons found, which I'm not expecting. So that's just, you know, if you wanna make, take advantage of.
Sure, yeah, I appreciate that.
You know, that lose time, whatever, and, you know, my wife wants me out of the house, so I'm here, so, you know, don't worry about it.
So, so if, if I may, you, you know, I, I think, I would ask the board, if you're, if you're willing to entertain another meeting in June, what is your schedule and your preferred date?
Well, I think before we do that, I think what we ought to do is get a sense of the board in terms of, and again, you guys staff about this June third date. I think what we could do is schedule the public hearing for June third, resolve for that. If for some reason the material's not in, it doesn't, you haven't had a chance to review it, we can always just then, you know, postpone it till the next meeting in June. But I, 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 you know, um, I don't think we should be scheduling a special meeting in late June at this point, where we don't even have a public hearing open or closed at this point. We can do that on June third, see where we are. And then say, figure out what we can do between staff and ourselves if we have, um, availability. I suspect we would, but I think, does that sound fair to, to?
Depends how far the dicks advance, right?
What's that?
Depends how far the dicks advance.
I can slow down review. Um, so we could, we can, uh, you know, schedule this for a public hearing on, on June third.
Take it from there.
Um, and I guess, uh, what we have, uh, ask you is, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Did it used to be one up on the board?
There is one over there, but that's, that's an eye test that I fail.
I mean, do we all, I know, oh, the seventeenth was post-politics.
Seventeenth is a tax.
Right.
June, then there's Juneteenth and June nineteenth, so like Wednesday, June eighteenth.
Uh, I feel like there was a conflict with rooms.
Yeah, well, that was a real problem.
That was a problem.
So can you get this material in to, uh, town hall to staff by a week from today, the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, stay at the memorial, there we go.
Oh, yeah, remember, that's, that's one of the problems we have.
Uh, yeah, we have a couple of days, yeah, we can.
Yeah, I mean, I don't do the photometric, but I'll ask them.
The, the, the photometric is, is, uh, is it's not us.
Yeah, I understand.
Somebody else, but yeah, we'll, we'll certainly.
I don't, I don't.
Sorry.
So is everything with the photometric may come in a day or two after that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'll just offer some assurance that a lot of the new lighting going in is gonna be essentially garden path lighting, and it's all twenty-seven hundred K, so it's warm, so it's, I can assure you there's no spillage going on to the neighbors, so that's possible.
Twenty-seven's a good number.
Yeah, that's, that's what you're looking for.
But we need to see, we need to see it, I mean, you wanna see it on the paper, so I understand that, but I can assure you it's.
No, the twenty-seventh, uh, again, this is up to you, Jeff and Dennis and Sabrina. Uh, if you go one extra day to twenty-eighth, because the twenty-seventh is the day after the holiday, it's a long weekend. Uh, it's giving them a little bit more time, but giving them less time.
That's a zoning board meeting.
No, no, Sabrina, that's just for our submission day.
For submission.
Oh.
So that gives.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think the sooner you can get it in, the better. I think Felicia will have to do a general notice for the public hearing.
Friday is my deadline for that, so I can put that in.
Yeah, so if we can notice it, we'll notice it for the third, and you have to have everything in by the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
That gives you another extra day after the holiday.
We'll let you know for whatever reason the photometric plan, but everything within our control, certainly.
Right.
I, I may end up calling Felicia that the photometric plan, we'll find out tomorrow, right? Jeff, the, the timing of the photometric plan.
Yeah.
Right. And then Dennis, when do they have to get the, those things that you need, the, for the trees and center, the tags? Is that something that has to be done at this point as well?
Those will be required prior to issues of building permits, so that's why I'm.
Okay, so, oh, that's, okay, we got time.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's my typical.
That's just to help us take care. It's in, in anticipation of getting approval, hopefully, third, let's say, third week in June.
Okay, so is there a motion then to, uh, move this to a public hearing on, uh, June third?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We pass the weekend, we'll see you couple of weeks.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
See you me on Wednesday.
Happy New Year.
Thank you everybody.
Bye.
Unadvertising right now.
I know, we gotta, we gotta reset the.
It's getting ugly now. Okay, we move now to our next item. Uh, this is an informal hearing for C T Homes LLC, four fifty-six and four sixty-two Arlong Road. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plat approval, application for stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control, and tree removal permit for construction of a four-lot subdivision. Oh, we're all in row.
You guys hear me?
Yep, gotcha.
Um, so if I can, I'll share my plans.
Thank you, yes.
Can I open your screen?
Got it.
Okay, so, uh, for the record, Ralph Alzetti, the engineer for Project, um, so last time you were at the, at the, if you don't remember any word, um, we were speaking about site distance and an eighty-fifth percentile, uh, speed on Arlong Road. Uh, so we did an eighty-five percentile speed analysis, um, and we got forty-nine and forty-eight miles per hour, that's our eighty-fifth percentile speed. So we used fifty as our, um, design speed in moving at our site distance. That resulted in moving our entrance off of the Arlong Road from approximately this location, or my first service, to the location as it's shown. Um, I can go through the site distance plan if you'd like, um. On top of that, and I believe the county engineer requests that us to do additional testing for the stormwater with, uh, cameras now witnessing. We did testing for our new specific location with West Coast County Department. Uh, we did testing for stormwater with New York City D E P personnel and towns there. Um, we've done B tests and M R testing in all those locations. Uh, I saw the comments from the consultants, um, I did not see anything in it that was, um, was shattering. And I know we do not have a landscaping plan yet. Uh, we, it's, you know, anticipate to fully comply with the, with the town codes as far as landscaping and tree, tree removal negotiation. Uh, we're gonna move along and hopefully schedule a voting.
Okay, uh, Sabrina, you had some comments?
I did, Mr. Chairman, um, just real quickly. I think that the applicant has addressed many of my comments. Um, the zoning board's table is in compliance at present with the R one half A for setback requirements. Uh, the action is an unlisted action, um, your words circulated a notice of, a notice of intent. Um, it has, um, there was no objection to that, so you're the lead agent. Um, the New York City D E P did suggest changes to the E A F form, um, and specifically indicated that they are awaiting an application to D E P. Um, so that should be, um, the, the reference to the D E P application being submitted in March twenty-twenty-five should be stricken from the E A F, so those two changes should be made. Um, the D E P also submitted comments on the SWIP. Um, and there is a question about a water course, which I believe Dennis will be speaking about. Um, the biggest issue for me is the cover, coverage calculation with worksheets. Um, I don't think that the coverage calculation, which is the development coverage was formulated correctly. And I did provide for the applicant, um, kind of a, 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 a different methodology to employ to figure that out. Round, hopefully, you got it.
Yeah, I did, I think we had it right the first time, you know, we moved the entrance and something that jumbled.
Um. Yeah, I get it, I get it. Um, but it, that, just if you can correct that, that would be very good. So I can confirm the development coverage. Um, they did provide a split rail fence to demarcate the wetland boundary, the buffer. Um, and, uh, I think that's it. The rest of the comments belong to other members of my team. So I don't think that I would have any objection, um, if the planning board wanted to schedule a total game.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Ken, can I ask a question on Sabrina's number six?
Sure.
So Sabrina, on question six, you asked about.
Yes.
The stormwater in the basin, are you referring to the basin in lot one?
Yes.
So this is maybe this is a question for the applicant, what happens with lot one? After the four houses are built and the four houses are sold, is lot one still owned by the applicant? And is the applicant responsible for taking care of it? Or has this become an H O A and these four homeowners are responsible for lot one?
What happened? An H O A, these four homeowners are responsible for it.
So it's an H O A and the homeowners will do it?
Yes, just as they'd be responsible for the, um, entrance off of Route, uh, one twenty-eight, Arlong Road.
So insurance on that piece of property, in case somebody trespasses and gets hurt, it's, it's covered by those four homeowners?
Right.
Okay. And then I guess that, that, that they have use of the property to go do stuff on it if they wanted to?
Um, I don't think that's the impound here, and Sabrina, you couldn't correct me, but this is a conservation subdivision, so I believe we have to, um, set aside a certain area for essentially conservation unit, so that lot is, is serving that purpose.
Correct.
So does that?
Correct, and, and the reason I raised this in, in my memo is that as an M S four, the town is responsible for ensuring that private stormwater facilities are maintained. Um, and so, you know, we are kind of changing our protocols and our requirements to ensure that when a project is approved, that they are, um, that they're aware of the responsibility of maintaining your stormwater infrastructure. And most importantly, that the new homeowners understand that they have a responsibility to maintain that stormwater infrastructure.
And let me say one thing here, uh, right, we've always done this for the past twenty years.
Yep.
Have always had very extensive comprehensive stormwater maintenance inspection for a call on every major subdivision that I've looked at. Ever since I've been here for thirty-two years, Frank was big on it. Uh, the only thing we gotta do is Jeff and I have to lock, file those, I think, along with Town Council to make certain that it implements the new heightened restrictions that are brought on by the new M S four regulations that the state is requiring and mandating that the towns do. But we've always had very comprehensive agreements, which we can use as a base and a guide, uh, and just to work on that as a guide to implement it once for M S four. So we've always had it, they'll just be a little bit more rigorous, uh, to satisfy immediate compliance with the D E C standards.
I just, you know, my thing is to make sure the homeowners know that this is their responsibility.
Well, it, it, it's very interesting, cause on the conversation, the, in the conversation we had earlier today with Bob and Jeff, uh, they were talking in terms of not only notice, but perhaps we actually require a little bit of an escrow set aside so that we have some level of assurance that maintenance will in fact take place. Um, because it's a little bit more difficult, you can sit there and enforce it, but then you have, you know, four homeowners, one's not participating, doesn't wanna participate, and all that kinda stuff that goes on from time to time. So Jeff had this idea that perhaps we could start to fold into that agreement, some sort of arrangement whereby there's some sort of escrow money set aside. I don't know by whom, I guess the sponsor, the applicant, um, that would be held. And then, of course, each, uh, new homeowner would be aware of the agreement and aware of, uh, this escrow that's set aside. So I guess you've seen this in other places, Jeff?
Um, yes, one of the bigger, uh, one of the, the larger requirements that New York State has, uh, burdened on the town is, uh, is requ- uh, ensuring maintenance of, of stormwater systems, so stormwater management practices. Meaning in this case, you know, we have a, a retention pond. Um, you know, that, that requires maintenance over a certain, over a certain time period, over its lifetime. And it, you know, it entails inspections, it entails, uh, ultimately, you know, uh, cutting, removing of, of vegetation and, and possibly dredging, um, so we may.
So the, does the state go to you to enforce that, or does, does the state contact these four homeowners directly?
They require the town to enforce these, to enforce these now, which they never had in the past, it was always on the homeowner. But now the town is required to make sure that, that the maintenance is done, it's, it's, the onus is on us. Um, so having, uh, you know, at least being able to, um, having some sort of cost estimate for maintenance and a maintenance plan for any stormwater management practices that are installed, it's probably what we're gonna be doing in the future. Um, and, and again, somebody has to be responsible for this, so whether, you know, we have some sort of management, you know, somebody has to manage the H O A that's going to manage this stormwater practice. So figuring out a, a sort of a, um, a foundation for how we lay that out is probably what we'll be doing.
As a matter of fact, Jeff's point to the, right, the town planning board has always put conditions in there which require the applicant to set up the H O A and make sure they get it approved within a brand one. But I think we have to go one step further to now really act as the H O A before it's turned over and collect the money, uh, to Jeff's point, and then transfer it to the H O A. But the most important thing is to make sure the H O A is functioning prior to the use of that money. So those are all conditions of approval that are put in resolutions.
And, and I bring this up because I, there's a, something that happened to a friend of mine recently where they purchased a home and didn't realize that they had responsibilities with New York State to maintain a certain portion of their property, and now they're scratching their head going. And, you know, I don't know if the seller ever shared that information. So fast forward ten, fifteen years, or these sellers, you know, I don't know if there's anything we can do to protect the town, or if it's just.
If I can jump, if I can jump in, typically, it's an, it's a, it's a maintenance agreement that's filed with, um, county landmarks. So anyone that would pull title on the property would see.
We'd find it, okay.
That's what I believe.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we do.
And the buyer, so then the buyer, so then the buyer knows, once they do a title cert, that it's, it's there, okay.
And all of these, all, sorry, all of these agreements that we're speaking of, the sideline easements, the comprehensive drainage inspection. And all of these, oh sorry, all of these agreements that we're speaking of, the sideline easements, the comprehensive drainage inspection,
The sideline easements, the comprehensive drainage inspection, uh maintenance agreements
and the common driveway utilities, all these are reviewed by in conjunction with the town engineer, town council.
Common driveway utilities. In conjunction with the town engineer, town council.
Uh and they're always filed with Westchester County and approved by the town board, we've done that on every major subdivision ever since I've been here to Ralph's point, so they're will be on file, you can find it if you go on the county land records. They'll have a control, they'll have a control number, they'll have a declaration page, they'll be picked up when you do the title cert, so
They'll have a declaration page.
Uh those are all the measures that we try to do to make certain that new homeowners do not get blindsided by these additional costs.
Thank you. Okay. Bob, you had some comments, right?
Yes, I'm just gonna go over the major comments, uh start with number one. Uh they did a great job on the intersection site distance by Tim Miller, did a fantastic job, very conservative, fifty M D H. Uh just wanna let everyone know that there will have to be sideline easement agreements. Along with each and every one of those lots, which will again will be recorded against each lot owner. Uh and it'll have to be specific easements to make certain that those lines are cleared all the time and perpetuity. So that is critical and that will all have to be shown delineated, put the meets and bounds on the on the subdivision map as well. Uh number two, uh D test holes, I know Ralph, you just mentioned it in your intro. Um all of these D test holes and per rates, have you ever received any data from the county? Are you telling me that they would have to look at it and they did approve it, just a clarification?
Well, they they witnessed all the testing, did not approve it until I submit to them the final plans, so yes, it's, I mean, did not improve it until we're finally there.
Yes.
But
Okay, but a mental requirement as far as the minimum of depth.
Yes, yes, everything that you want as far as um depth and and you know, progressable, okay, so yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, just respond and just make it quicker like that, so if the county was satisfied with the depth uh to the groundwater and bedrock and the metal, the criteria, just let us know that sort of planning, what we realizes that.
And you did see the data, correct, Bob?
Yes, I did, and this and and this little punch deed I gave you with like six items, I mean generally as you know, you you're preaching to our buyer.
Uh yes, I did.
All these, this is gonna be a table on the subdivision map, uh obviously with its files, so we can see the test load data, sort of flow rates, bedroom, absorption fields, that's all gonna be on the table, I think it'd be a good idea, uh Ralph, to show it on the site plan too as well.
I think
Uh number three, number three, um whether it makes access, I don't believe the access applies with section six three Ralph, because if you read it it's gotta extend all the way over to the overflow uh on the west hand side, which is gonna be going up the whole west side, that's twelve foot wide minimum. So I believe that may impact the wetlands, where you may have to move it further east. So that's three, one and two, so I would definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, you don't realize that we're not gonna impact wetlands, we will we will widen our berm and they use the berm as a maintenance access to around the entire pond.
Okay, and again, that will be all included in the, this is a title from a previous agreement.
And then that will be all
uh stormwater managed facilities and it just mentions all the types of S N Ps that are maintained, construction maintenance inspection, right? The right point, Jeff's point, so that'll be something that will be looked at quite carefully, that was number three. I'm gonna be going down to number six now, this is uh easements for the common driveway, um obviously, the genesis of these easements, Ralph, will be eas- will be the easement width. Uh when I was looking at drain line, I believe B, which is on the west side of the site. Uh it appears to me, Ralph, that the drain easements are generally fifty to twenty feet wide. Um I don't think it's gonna be a good idea to have easements encroach onto a patio
I don't think
or go into the wetlands. So you might wanna rethink that because the easements gotta be at least these are not town easements, town easements be minimum on twenty feet, based on what the commissioner likes to see. Maybe you can tweak out ten feet, with even ten feet you're gonna encroach onto the patio deck and encroach it to the wetlands, I don't think that's a way to go. I'm gonna for the planning board, what you wanna see them do here, either reduce the patio deck or just have it go over the wetlands, it's a vital, I don't know. Um I don't know, your thoughts are, Ralph?
I'm gonna jump in, I'm gonna I'm gonna jump in and reduce the patio deck and just move the um move that man a little bit further away from wetland off her line.
Just right, I'm gonna make that one, I would think that easement's gotta be at least ten feet.
Which may I would think that Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's that one, then I'm gonna drop on down to uh M P T, you know, I just put in a small factor there, one point three, I did a real quick down and early calculation on the on the fill. It looks to me it's gonna be similar to how I truck traffic go. Then we have on uh any wood, you're looking at two hundred to thirty to two eighty. You're looking at five hundred trucks, so obviously make the long story short, you have to give a maintenance M P T plan out there uh just to make certain people are alerted that trucks will be have to run on that road during construction. Uh so that's M P T, M P T two, we're gonna jump on down to
Two out of here. Uh one second.
Yes, sir.
On the um on the cut and fill summary, do your figures include the pools?
Excuse me?
Do your figures include the pools, the swimming pools? On the cut and fill analysis.
Uh that's a question for Ralph.
I
Um
Did it make?
I have to double check, I don't think they do.
Yeah, I don't think so either, we don't have any information about depth or anything else, I don't know how we could possibly include it.
Um Yeah, I will double check that, update that number, um there's also some areas that we did not count as far as um fill. Uh as as for example, some of the septic systems that we're filling, we did not count. Um and a lot of this uh site is usable for septic fill, so that number of three thousand, even four thousand cubic yards um is probably inflated, but I will revise the number, include the pools, I will I will, you know, make an assumption of a four foot deep pool and a six foot D section of the pool and revise that number and also update it with the septic areas. So I think I think that number of three thousand, four thousand is gonna actually be lower as it come down.
Okay, that's good, yes.
Yeah.
Um jumping down to G C one, um common access drive and the common driveway. Um generally, please note that I think the common driveway should at least be eighteen foot wide with two foot shoulders. But right now you just show that thinks sixteen and two and two, so you got twenty there. Um I guess the twenty's okay if you wanna keep the sixteen and two and two, so you do have the twenty, you're just thinking in terms of what the building inspector likes to see and what the the fire chief likes to see. Uh generally, minimum, minimum, minimum of twenty, but but G C two, we had to do this up on East Village, Toll Brook Brothers. The ladder, the ladder truck, the outriggers go out twenty four feet. So therefore you need structural support going on twenty four feet now. And it's gotta be twenty five loading and the outriggers uh maximum loading to seventy five P S I, which is ten thousand, so you're gonna have to do some sort of report on that. Um Ralph, we do have some samples, I can give you that they did out there in East Village, I think it would be helpful to the rear end of the wheel. But we do need that demonstrated and site specific engineers report on that. Just so you know, if you need that report that they did, up there in East Village, I'll be more than happy to share with you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Uh G C seven, obviously maybe it's premature, but I guess ultimately you submit a preliminary subdivision map on my surveyor, even mine, this subdivision map will have to show all those easements and the meets and bounds of the common driveway for the drain easements, uh for the sidelines, we said too many of the Janices all the meets and bounds and all the agreements, so that will be critical, that will need to be looked at as we review this as well. Uh G C ten, just show a really good detail of the infiltration basis, uh site specific, I don't like the generic ones out of the D E C manual, they're great for guidance, but uh G C nuts and bolts. Um G C fourteen for some reason they set a line distance, so uh
Yeah.
historically, I've always seen it go from center to standard structure. Uh just forget about this lack of the structure itself, it just makes it easier to compute. Uh G C seventeen, eighteen, again, the the maintenance agreement, Ralph, you were talking about before, uh in this particular project, you're gonna need um uh performance bond for the plantings, performance bond for the simple site performance bond for all of the stormwater, those are the three A nine which you're gonna need. Uh G C nineteen, uh you'll have to do an estimate on that, give it to me in uh in Word. Uh excuse me, in Excel, so it's easy, we usually do it just a little bit. Um this is going on for two years, we usually adjust these costs two years out, it's a construction, it's usually a two year timeline. So go from twenty four, twenty five to twenty six. Uh that's G C nineteen. Um you gotta pay three percent inspection fee, G C twenty. And uh those are my main comments uh for night, Mr. for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good, thank you, Bob, uh G C twenty four, you might wanna update to Dennis, as opposed to Steve Coleman for the inspection.
Oh, yes, good point, that's what happens when you don't pay too fast.
Oh, yes.
No problem, good. Dennis, you got some comments?
Uh sure, and I'll try to help with the clarification on the D E P letter, cause it was a little convoluted to me. Uh with respect to my memo, uh the beginning is just repeats for the general comments. Um again, with respect to the wetlands buffer. Uh I know you could probably approach the work as minimal as possible if you were interested in in removing the shed, but obviously you would just want some some type of restoration, so the only way to capture all that would be, you know, to apply for a wetlands permit for the for the demolition slash removal and just, you know, how you would look to restore the area. And then, you know, I I figured I know, I know that they've appeared a a fair number of times before the board, so I just took the liberty of just sort of, you know, calculating what we're talking about, you know, again, preliminary, I've only been, you know, to the site once, haven't, you know, verified, I mean, some of these trees may have fallen. Some of the measurements may not be right, et cetera. But I calculate there in the neighborhood of two hundred and seventy four replaced trees required, so that number had never been thought out, so I figured it was just worthwhile to throw it out there. And you know, that needs to be considered going forward. Uh that was summarizing my memo. Um with respect to the D E P letter, the last item uh this Garcia's referring to. So they're acknowledging the G I S uh depictions of the water course in the wetlands, and I know obviously on the plans uh Paul Janning had completed the wetlands delineation and I as Newcastle uh regulatory authority accepted that delineation, yes, that accurately depicts the limits of wetlands. And so that's what you put on the E A F form with respect to the acreage of wetlands on site. However, for the last statement about the Army Corps of Engineers, uh so I'm taking this to mean that in order for D E P to accept your depiction of the wetlands, you're gonna have to apply for a jurisdictional determination from the Corps. And if they concur that the limits and extent of the wetlands are as depicted, then you're gonna receive that letter, that's usually good for five years and I guess that becomes the documentation or the acknowledgement that that confirms what she's referring to with respect to the G I S aerial images. Um as far as the E A F that would also then confirm that you're not uh encroaching into any wetlands or regulated buffers, cause even from D E C's perspective it would only be a hundred feet, since this is the environmental protection overlay district, that's why, you know, you're in the hundred and fifty feet territory. So really, I mean, getting that jurisdictional determination, I mean, you could do it from both agencies, and honestly, you probably should, now that D E P's excuse me, D E C has changed the rules for twenty twenty five. It would be, in my opinion, just a one time thing to sort of get it done and then you would have confirmation from both agencies that regulate wetlands that our project is certainly not within wetlands. Uh the Corps doesn't care about buffers, but the D E C would, and you would say, well, we're obviously outside of your hundred foot buffer because we're outside of the hundred and fifty foot buffer from Newcastle. So again, I'm not D E P, but until you do that, to me, this letter would stay sort of floating there and unclarified with respect to that last comment, so that's my interpretation. Uh I didn't speak to them directly, but that's how we used to do it. When we would do wetlands delineation, we would get the J Ds this way. We knew that the agencies agreed with us and what appeared on the plans was obviously um consistent, but what they uh agreed was the wetlands. And those are my comments.
Great, okay, thank you. Ralph, I had a question for you, um you know, I I I think at one earlier meeting, you indicated that, you know, the pools are gonna be part of the application. It seems to me that the pools, as currently located, fall within what looked to be be steep slopes. Uh at least on one of these uh lots, it's extreme, but it seems like it's very steep. Have we seen, have you looked at that, uh do we need a steep slope application for the pools, I mean, with uh with what they're proposing here? It seems to me that we we should be looking at that, since the pools are now gonna be part of the application. What I would hate is to have, you know, this is what happens sometimes. Future people, buyers see these boxes and then see a pool box and just say, ah, it's all approved, I can get this. And then when they walk at the staff and they find out that no, it's not, then we have a a big hullabaloo over it's already approved, it's not approved, um so as long as you're going to be including the pools as part of the application in addition to the cut and fill, I I think we should really get some sort of information about the steep slopes, the impacts, what those slopes are out there. Uh are they fifteen, are they twenty five, are they thirty five? And um the location of the pools and and what we plan to do in terms of uh grading and filling um uh and impacting these slopes. It's it's not just an empty exercise, because in this particular case, echoing what Dennis said, this is part of the uh environmental overlay area. And one of the reasons it falls within that area is that uh we have steep slopes that um are adjacent to and contiguous to um um wetlands. And those are the wet wetlands that are most susceptible to damage with any kind of um activity on on the slopes. So uh I'm sure there are gonna be all kinds of solutions to to remedy the situation, but I think we need that information. So I think at a minimum, we need to see a steep slope application along with a wetland application that Dennis is uh requesting.
That's uh what was the second one, I'm sorry, the steep slope application, what was the second one?
Wetland application.
For the shed.
Yeah. Shed.
Okay.
Yep.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I kinda forgot to mention one of my items, is it okay, say that now?
Also
Okay.
Sure.
Um M P two two, I'm I'm just a little concerned with the extent of rating around the two that would be required to put in the drainage. So in M P two, I'd like to see some sort of section cut through more particular lot two demonstrating that there's gonna be no rating until the hundred and fifty one and so please show a few sections on those, it's a pretty good amount of cut on some of those, and I think right about twenty foot east of the pool area lot two, you get about a seventeen foot cut. And it's very close to the buffer, so please show that to see how exactly your your proposed rating meet. And there will be no impact based on the grade over the hundred and fifty foot buffer line, so uh that's critical right there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I believe you're talking about this area here and where this is
Okay, good, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, it is.
This area here, where my cursor is, is really flat.
Actually, to the right, to to the right.
This is Here?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, this is, so so again, this is where my cursor is right now, it's flat. It goes up a very, very steep hill to a ridge and then it goes back down. This, these existing common lines that are kind of behind or under underneath my proposed rating on the pool um those are very, very close together, which indicates a very steep slope. The path slope appears to be manmade. Um I I believe that they were kinda digging this out over the years, um and i- if you look at this out in the field, you it just looks like it's a manmade slope. Cause it was, it just looks like it was it was being quote unquote mined, I'll say. Um so we're kinda just, you know, this is really, really steep slope up to this ridge right here and then starts going down gently. So it's almost like we're just kind of smoothing it down, it actually would, it makes it makes it less erosive, I'll call it, just because right now it's it's extremely, extremely steep, but it's it's a manmade slope, it's not like a rocky slope that that was occurring in the
I agree, but but just for clarity purposes and
Yeah, absolutely, and obviously that
You just, you just yeah, just do the sections by the pool, especially on those on those two, the lots three and four.
Yep. Yep. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you Mister Chairman.
Thank you Mister Chairman. Okay, thank you. Anyone else any questions?
I just have a question for curiosity.
Sure.
Um Ralph, when you got the report back from Tim Miller and they located the driveway how close was it located to the original driveway that was there the existing one?
To the old house?
To the old house, yeah.
Well, the old the old house is in this area.
Well, the old the old house is in this area.
So that the wasn't there like a driveway with two pillars stone pillars?
Yes, yes there is a driveway with two stone pillars um it is approximately right around here.
Okay. It's.
It is very close it's not far from where it was there's probably a very good use for that right they they
They probably figured out the best spot to pull out.
Right, they looked at it and passed and said this is a this is a good spot you can see far and let us let us put it there so.
Okay. Great. Alright, um so if we can get this um uh do we feel as though we are there do we have enough information to schedule this for a public hearing uh do we wanna see more with more information do fill in the the some of the spots that we have here some of the gaps seems to me that we need the wetland and steep slope applications first because those technically require a public hearing anyway so it seems to me that we should get those first and then we can move there and get get to the public and get this going. Does that make sense? So I then we'll hold it open for Ralph Ralph for another informal so if you get that information to us um maybe we if if you get it to us uh soon we can get you for um the July meeting the second July meeting.
Yeah, I mean is there any way with the word entertain um scheduling a public hearing and keeping it open I need a good demonstration you don't have to close it.
I I don't I don't think we have a administrative issue with it I I the only issue I have is really that it's it's weird to schedule a public hearing before we actually have the application. Administrative meeting complete.
Okay, and we we can uh uh get it to you as soon as we can.
Just ask the client now. Yeah, as soon as you can and then um what's the second meeting in July?
July fifteenth and the deadline for submission is June thirtieth for that.
Can you make July can you make July one?
July first uh deadline is June ninth.
Can you kinda try that Ralph?
I can make that June ninth deadline, yes.
I can make that. Good, let's do that. Super. Okay.
Move these to a law.
Yep. Good, we'll see you then.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Bye, everybody.
Yep.
Figure out.
Okay, our last item now uh the application for uh the scene reamer is uh has been withdrawn by the Alguid uh we have just minutes of May sixth uh two thousand twenty five any issues questions um changes? I have no changes. I have one little thought.
You have a?
One little thought which I'll just give to you. Anyone anything? No?
No, that was good.
If not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of uh May sixth? Motion second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye aye?
Aye.
And that's it. Is there a motion to close the hearing I mean the the meeting?
We have one question.
Do you have a question? Yes.
Give us the same thing.
Well, that was really in connection with the Kittle House.
Oh, okay.
So that was just to give you an idea of of roads throughout the town that have limitations already built into them for truck traffic.
Gotcha.
Okay. And Annandale was one that came up so it it it's it's already there it's already exists as a limitation so no need to be redundant.
Mister Chairman.
Yep.
Um I don't know if everybody is aware but I got notification late this afternoon that Rose Noonan who is the president of the Housing Action Council had passed away due to um a long battle of cancer and I know that um she was uh involved in almost every affordable housing project that um Newcastle has been involved in as well as working with the Pacelane Reservoir Center and their affordable.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
Okay, um again is there a motion to close the meeting?
A motion second? Second.
All in favor? Aye aye? Okay.
Goodnight all.
Goodnight all, yep. Goodnight.